Good evening and welcome.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to today's work session. Today is Monday, June 10th of the 12th, 2022. The time is now 4:01 PM. The work session of the city council will welcome the order in person as well as through Zoom. We've got four items for discussion tonight. We have a discussion with Neil Paul regarding potential plans for the Eckhart School Building. Item two, housing needs assessment report from Root Policy. Item three, discussion of municipal broadband next steps. And item four is second quarter 2022 financial report. So let's go ahead and get started with Mr. Neil Paul. Would you come forward and kind of let us know what your plans are, Neil?
Great. Thank you, thank you all for having me. Appreciate it. Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here. Where do I start? Just a little bit of background. I first got involved, came involved here in Trinidad in 2016 when Temple Aaron on Maple Avenue was for sale. And I came to visit, walked through it, realized, you know, what the town had here. By the way, I don't know if you folks know, but it's the next national historic landmark. So they're only 26 in the state currently. This would be the 27th. So that's been a big move right now. We'll have a new boiler installed and the next big project needed rear roof and then everything else in between. So I went under contract with Eckhart Elementary first. I just, everything's going on with education and the kind of the, I don't want to say lack of support, but what's happened with a lot of schools being sold. It just seems a shame to me. That's a beautiful building. Personally, I'd like to keep it in the educational realm, keep kids active there on the property. Head Start is in there currently, as you may realize, CBI Head Start, which is an interim management group. I've been working with Patrick Walsh with Trinidad Youth Club, working to try to get them also to be tenants. Obviously, it's a very impressive building. There's a lot of space there. To me, it doesn't make any sense to have any of it vacant. If I could have children being taught there year-round, I think it would, you know, continue maintaining its educational purpose with what the city had established back in the 60s when the building was first built. So it wouldn't be a public school any longer. On the other hand, if the public, if the school district ever decided they need it sometime in the future, things change. You know, I'd be very interested in discussing that possibility, having the school have it back, the school district have it back. But for now, if we can keep it occupied for youth, I think it'd be of great value to the area. In addition to that, I, part of my own personal interest is agriculture. So I would like to build some green space, some greenhouses, grow spaces for the kids to have hands-on experience, to understand where their food comes from, nutrition. You know, we all know how important that is, and a lot of kids go to school hungry. I think that if we had places on the property where kids could grow their own food, learn how to do it, the staff would assist, take whatever food. I don't want to necessarily manage or be involved in that element. I would just help, you know, fund or help fund or have it built there on the property. And then the kids and the staff could take the food home and then whatever's left could go to the city for whatever the city needs. You know, I imagine there's some occupants within the town that could probably use some fresh, healthy food. And so that would all be available for the community. So that's, you know, part of what I'd like to do with the property is to keep kids there and teach them some hands-on experiences, have them learn and benefit from it. And honestly, I didn't really have a specific agenda here tonight. It's whatever the city would have an interest in, potentially helping support. I know that Trinidad Youth Club, Pat Walsh's group, people he works with, could use some assistance financially. So if that's a remote or a possibility at all, the city might be interested in helping him occupy some of that space. I visited him this morning. I saw where they're at now. It's a nice facility and, you know, the price is right for them, but it's honestly about grown it. You know, if any of you have been there up to where he's at, it's nice, but it's small. And I think having Head Start half of the building, having Trinidad Youth Club in the other half of the building, I think would be a real benefit to the community. And both parties seem to be very interested in the whole agricultural element. You know, there's a lot of open parking lot area and even the playground areas. Places that are not being really functionally utilized right now. If that was a nice large greenhouse or greenhouses where the kids could learn and benefit from, I think that they both, both occupants seem to be very interested in that hypothetically, if Trinidad Youth Club were to occupy. So really, any questions you folks might have?
Any questions from the council?
I interviewed Mr. Walsh today at the radio station.
Oh, pretty much.
Said he needed, well, he'd like to occupy the opposite side of the wing where Head Start is or, you know, where the school is. And he's really excited about it. And he's going to, I think, get on the agenda probably for next Tuesday to come in as well to introduce himself. You're talking about a greenhouse slash horticulture as well?
Horticulture, agriculture.
Agriculture?
Right.
Okay.
All food production for, you know, year-round, four-season grown, you know, year-round food production. Just an idea, you know, it's something that seems to be of interest to both Head Start and Pat. You know, obviously, you know, there's some property there, three and a half acres. Instead of just keeping it bare land, it seems like that would be a good function, good use of the space.
And the recreational aspect, there's a gymnasium.
There's a gymnasium in there, right? The kids, they would, I had Pat and Tenora Sands, who kind of runs the Head Start group. The three of us met on site. They walked and they kind of figured out a plan, how they could schedule it so that both groups could use it when they needed to without, you know, stepping on each other's toes. So they seem to be very interested in working together as well. Sounds good. So, yeah, anything else?
Any other questions?
I mean, one thing I will say, I'll just throw it out. I figured once I, I'm supposed to close on it, September 30th, so it's coming up soon. I'm looking at Daryl, First National Bank Trinidad, to get a permanent loan in there in the interim of having to do some hard money financing, which is pricey, but hopefully as soon as I can move the funds over, you know, get the loan from First National Bank Trinidad from Daryl. And then whatever it's worth, taxes or something that the state has an act proposed that if a property is not necessarily owned by a nonprofit youth group, but if it's leased to a nonprofit youth group, to have a tax exempt. Currently, it is tax exempt, obviously, it's a school, it's a school property. I don't know, obviously, you can talk amongst yourself, but if there's something that could be done to, if we were to keep it as youth educational services, if there's anything that could be done on the taxes.
Is there, you said there's, is there a bill that's possibly being proposed?
Right. Signed by the governor, signed by a group of supporters. I have it with me in a briefcase.
Do you know what the number is on that proposed bill? If you can get that to us?
Sure.
We can, I can check into it?
Sure.
See what it looks like. I'll get our lobbyists to look into it.
Okay. I do have it, but I can give it to you in a few minutes here if you want.
Sure.
You know, if that passes, then it would be, certainly be a lot more accommodating to, you know, make it a more affordable situation. But, you know, I know looking at the mill, it'd be the city receives some taxes, the school districts, the water department, sanitation, the county, obviously. So I don't know if there's any availability for individual entities to be able to allow that to be exempt.
What's interesting is that, you know, it's currently tax exempt and if it's your facility, but it's still being utilized, going to be utilized by the Head Start. I wonder if that would still fall under the parameters of the tax exempt status?
It would under this act, but I don't know because it would be, you know, then owned privately.
Right, yeah.
It would be operated as a non-for-profit youth educational system, program. But I don't know. I don't know if that, how that would work, honestly. But if it's something, then, you know, the city would be interested in looking into.
I guess that the bill number, we can kind of follow up on that.
Sure.
Should we get, other questions?
I, wow, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for taking interest in that company and the kids of Trinidad. I'm really excited about what you're thinking in funding and also about Temple Aaron and what's happened with that. Thank you for your involvement in that because that's a treasure that I'm glad was not lost to the ages. So that's, it's really, really encouraging to hear this because I, there's a lot of attention that the kids in this city need. It will be life-changing for them to have even more opportunities to them, for them to have a place to hang out and things to do and expanding what Trinidad Youth Club does and Head Start is a great idea. So that's my thanks, thank you.
My pleasure. I mean, it feels, you know, like an important purpose. I'll just let you know, I'm not a big-time developer or any realm. This would be kind of a one-and-all. You know, I don't own the temple, I'm vice president there, but it's a nonprofit. I'm, you know, it's run by a board, by trustees, which I'm involved with. You know, the Eckhart property would be something that, you know, who owns it? But I just want to keep it as it was built for educational purposes. I think it provides a greater service than anything, as opposed to just, you know, developing for profit only.
As is very frequently the case, I echo council and the local trees comments. I am genuinely appreciative of what you're doing. I did want to mention that my brother is a teacher at the high school in Trinidad, and he has a real heart for a lot of things you mentioned, too. Food production and year-round growing of food items. So there might, there might be some symbiosis there to, you know, involve, you know, other agencies. It would be helpful to that when you get off the ground.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I, I have a vision. I have a plan in my mind, but implementing it, I really want to keep as much of the locals possible. So Pat has a couple of people on his board that are very much involved. I can't remember my name. One of his board members who has several acres, who does a lot of work with kids as well. I definitely want to get input from the local community. It's just really taking a lot of effort mentally and whatnot just to keep the building under contract. We had a couple of extensions, you know, to own it. And once I own it, you know, I really want to sit down, hopefully maybe have another opportunity to sit down with an actual plan and where we go with it, bless you. And where we go with it, who to reach out to. I don't really know all the players, you know, the best people to reach out to, to get some advice, you know, whether it's design, whether it's operation, whether it's even some fundraising would be great. You know, if there are any grants available. You know, it's not a very wealthy person. So it's, you know, it's taken me a lot to take ownership of the property. Whatever I can find, it's available that seems to be, you know, if the value that I could bring to the property could generate some grants, that would be fantastic. So if your brother could help me out, all yours.
Yeah, okay. He's, I'm sure I can get that contact from him, he should put all that together. Yeah, it would be great.
Yeah, I'm very open to it.
You know, Neil, as far as funding goes, you might look into maybe some of the philanthropic groups endeavor like the Vetrus Foundation and some of those others. They might be interested in helping you fund this because they, you know, the Gates Foundation, there's Alpamar. There's a few others that if you look at all their information, it shows what they will fund. And I think that would be an ideal place to look into, to help fund, to fund the project.
Yeah, I have a lot of work to do.
Now you do.
Yeah. So I don't want to say this is the easiest part, so it certainly hasn't been, but, you know, I know the hard parts to come.
You know, thank you for looking for, your interest in the community and more so to try to keep a business, or not a business, but a building that, you know, nothing happens to it eventually starts to deteriorate. And that's one of the biggest reasons to see that you're willing to do something with it.
It's, you know, the town, the community is kept in good shape and I want to maintain it and hopefully improve on the young assets.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number two, housing needs assessment report by Root Policy. Do we have somebody here from Root Policy? Hi, what is your name?
My name is Julia Jones.
Julia Jones.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. I did send a PowerPoint that I'm assuming can be pulled up on here by Audra. I've only done this virtually in the past for you all back in the early days, so I'm not as familiar with it in person.
Give me just one second.
Oh, sure, no problem.
While we're waiting to get started here, I read through the entire 123 pages this morning.
Great, yeah, busy morning.
A lot, a lot of questions, probably don't have time for all of them. The, there's a lot of good information in there. The only thing that I felt was a little outdated, it is outdated, is a lot of the information is dated at 2019. We see what has happened with housing since 2019, housing cost explosion, you know, that's happened. So it's really pretty much outdated as far as that goes. I'm not sure how we could read, what we could read into that coming into 2022. It gives us an idea of where we were, doesn't give us an idea of where we are, but at the same time, you know, how do we, how do we figure that out? The other thing is I was noticing, let me see, right, what comes down? The number of people that responded. It was 100 and...
Are you referring to the resident survey?
Yeah, because you had...
That would be 166.
Yeah, there was 166 respondents, but then you also had stakeholders that were quite low. And so it wasn't, to me, that didn't give a real broad perspective of the entire community. And it was zeroed into, it was not broad throughout the city, it looked like. It was kind of narrowed down from what it said.
For the resident survey?
Yes, for the resident.
Geographically, the resident survey is pretty dispersed, as you said, and had a pretty similar representation in terms of demographics as the community at one.
Anyway, why don't you go and get started?
Sure, yeah. And just to address your comments, you know, you make a great point. Some of the data is stated at this point. We look at it as providing a baseline of information of what the market looked like in 2019. There's not a lot of more updated data that is available to us at this time. And I know you all have been hard at work in terms of housing. So you have units that are in the pipeline that are not reflected in our report from the new Housing Now incentive program. And you all have been doing things with your land use code. So we certainly recognize that some of the data could be dated. We really look at this as a baseline of housing needs or a snapshot that you can refer back to in the future to measure progress really going forward. So just to get started, as I said, my name is Julia Jones. I work for Root Policy Research. We have been working on this project since January. If you could go ahead and advance the slide. So I wanted to give us a quick recap of where we've been because I know we have so many faces in the room. So in January and February is when we were doing the data analysis portion of this project, which is why we have 2019 data there. The census had not released 2020 data at that time. During February and April, we focused on engagement with the community through resident surveys as well as stakeholder interviews. We invited far more folks to do stakeholder interviews than actually signed up to do those interviews. But I would say we had of the representation of employers and developers in the community. We had a handful of both of those groups represented. We did a presentation of probably too much data to you all April 12th. If you remember, we were here virtually. Since then, we've really been focusing on the future housing needs and developing recommendations. And here we are, bringing the final report and presentation to you all. If you could go ahead and advance. I wanted to make sure I touch on some of the things we talked about April 12th because I didn't want to repeat that entire presentation to all. Again, a lot of it can be found in the executive summary. Some of the big takeaways are in this executive summary. So if you don't want to dig through the report, there are some good data pieces in terms of demographics of the community, the housing market, future housing needs, the community survey findings, and what we're calling top housing needs. I will briefly cover today the top housing needs again, just to refresh your memory, and then we'll dive into Root Policy's recommendations. So in terms of top housing needs, we identified five of them. First being additional affordable rentals, particularly for service industry residents earning less than $25,000 per year. That group is generally referred to as extremely low income or those who are earning less than 30% of what we call AMI or Area Median Income. And they're generally not served by market products and require some form of affordable subsidy to make units available at that income level. At the time of the report, there was a gap of about 146 units at that price point, which is a pretty small gap for a community or size. That's a pretty manageable gap. You probably have some units coming in through your Housing Now incentive program that will help to address that disparity. But the need is always going to be greatest for that population because the market is never going to serve them currently. The second top housing need we have is starter homes for ownership product types for workforce housing priced near or below $250,000. This need really came from our interviews with stakeholders and their concerns with not being able to house their workforce. They indicated that really what's needed is two-to-three bedrooms, single families attached at this price point for families moving to the area and also to attract skilled workers. However, a lot of the developers that we spoke to said they can't hit this price point with the way that the pipeline has, the cost of construction has gone exponentially in the last couple of years, as you've mentioned. So there is a gap there between what developers can deliver to the market and what employers are asking for in the market. The third would be increased ownership product diversity. And this really comes back to your two fastest-growing populations in Trinidad, which would be seniors and younger professionals. So those would be likely first-time homebuyers or folks looking to downsize. And the product types that they may be looking for are smaller, more affordable, something like condos, patio homes, townhomes. And this came out of the survey data as well when we looked at residents' preferences. Fourth, we have home improvement assistance and rehabilitation of aging properties. I know you all are making investments in this now. Through our data, we saw that about half of units in Trinidad were built prior to 1950. I'm sure this is no surprise to you. Stakeholders that I spoke to said that the waitlist to get home rehabilitation is about five to six years, even if you have the money. And I heard another estimate from someone else who's four years, so somewhere in there, I'm assuming. And it seems that the issue isn't necessarily the funding, it's the contractor shortage in the area and attracting somebody to come down to do a smaller project like a home rehab.
Did you get that information through the stakeholders? Is that where you got that from?
Yes.
I wanted to ask a question about that. Where is this list of people who are waiting and what waiting list is there? I mean, is there a, does COG have a program that helps with low-income or elderly houses? Okay, is that the one that's got a waiting list?
Yes.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Yeah. And so we also did a little analysis of Home Mortgage Disclosure Act data, which is what it sounds like, home mortgages. And we looked at mortgages specifically for home repairs in Los Anamos County. There were 24 of them from 2018 to 2022, and they were an average of about $80,000. So what that says to us is that folks are maybe buying more for homes at that $250,000 price point, but then having to invest another $80,000 to make it more livable, suitable for their needs or their preferences. And that's about 30% of the home's average value. Finally, the city of Trinidad is booming with tourism. You all have made great investments in your downtown area. And you want to make sure this top housing need is really about ensuring that focus remains and that in the future you can attract more residential development and contribute to economic development through those investments. And as I mentioned, you know, this also comes from wanting to be able to attract skilled labor, young professionals, families to move to the area. So just applauding, you know, the investments that you have made, but also continuing that moving forward. So we'll go to the next slide. And I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, all the things that you all have going on in terms of housing. So you have the Housing Now incentive program. I saw that you've received applications for, was it 110 units going forward with that program? And over the past year and a half, I believe, I've been looking at the land use code to see how that is in alignment or not in alignment with the comprehensive plan as well as your housing goals. Finally, you have a fairly recent comprehensive plan. 2017 is pretty good in terms of a comprehensive plan and having a vision for the community going forward and what that could look like.
Now, before we go on with that, with the comprehensive plan versus our current zoning codes, they're talking, one of the recommendations or one of the thoughts was that there was, I don't know, there's concern with some of our codes. That's something I think that I would like to know. While you're here, I'm not sure aware of what those are. Like to know what items are being considered. According to the information I read, is that they might be a detriment to this building. So get that.
And I know some of the things that were being visited were ADUs, roof pitch, size of the house compared to the lot. I just kind of, those are the things, some of the things that were being visited at that time. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Did we ever get the survey analysis and land use code critique? I don't remember ever seeing that, and maybe I'm just not remembering it. But I don't remember that being projected to council.
It is on your website. I grabbed it from there.
I prepared it, but I, probably coincidental with his leaving, I don't remember whether or not there was follow-up for you.
She said it's on the website.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know if you heard that yet.
I just don't think the city council's ever had a conversation about it.
Yeah, I don't think we have. Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I mean, when I, when I spoke with stakeholders and through the resident survey, I would say it's sort of a mixed bag in terms of opinions about what changes to the land use code could accomplish. In our recommendations, we are, and I'll bet to this, but we're really recommending just an increase in flexibility, getting in alignment with a comprehensive plan that you have adopted and using the stakeholder input as well as the survey data from both our survey but also the land use code survey that was conducted by SCi to guide your decision-making in that process and ensure you're in alignment with your community's values as you consider those changes. So we are not proposing any specific changes. It is a best practice to allow for a little bit more flexibility for those, what we call missing middle housing types that are more affordable for starter homes. Does that answer your question? Okay. Before I dive into our recommendations, I wanted to just highlight two related goals from the 2017 comprehensive plan. And these really align with and set the stage for our recommendations that we've included in the report. So the first is to diversify housing choices, to attract new household types and meet the needs of all citizens. This really goes back to that increased ownership property diversity, potentially opening up zoning to condos or different types of housing that could specifically be in areas like downtown. When I spoke to stakeholders, some were concerned about protecting neighborhoods, but others shared that there are historical districts that protect neighborhoods that are of significance, and you can also exclude neighborhoods that you don't want to touch from any reforms. So you have the power to control that. The second goal that I wanted to highlight is to increase investment and stability in neighborhoods to improve neighborhood vitality, safety, and appearance. And this piece goes back to ensuring that there are resources available for home improvement and rehab for your citizens to preserve and improve the city's homes and neighborhoods. So we'll go ahead and go forward to the recommendations. These were developed using the data from the housing needs assessment, the survey, and our conversations with stakeholders. So we as those policies are offering these to you as considerations. We have about seven. So the first is to adopt an affordable housing goal. And this is something we suggest to communities throughout Colorado because it does a couple of things. First, it signals to the development community that your community has a desire for affordable or workforce housing, however you would like to label it. Second, it can provide a benchmark to navigate negotiations with developers. I know a lot of your projects are coming in at 80% AMI. If you wanted, you know, 80% AMI, but they're coming in at 90%, you could have a goal of 80% AMI and point to that goal and say, "No, we really would like you to get to this price point." So it just gives you sort of a bargaining chip there. Third, it helps you measure the effectiveness of strategies and interventions or investments that you're making, like the incentive program. So if you have a goal, it helps you evaluate whether or not you're meeting that goal, essentially is all I'm saying. And so communities do this in a lot of different ways because communities are very different. First would be an output oriented goal. And this would be essentially how many units or what percentage of units would you like to be building to be affordable? There's also input oriented goals. This could be, you know, we want to set aside X amount of dollars to go towards our Housing Now incentive program annually. That could be your goal. There's also value oriented, and this is a little more non-committal. It's a little more, we value workforce housing in our community, and we would like to ensure that we are supporting that as a community. We can go on to the next recommendation, please. All right, so the second recommendation is to measure the outcomes of the Housing Now incentive program. So you all have made a big investment in affordable housing. And we're just encouraging you to make sure you're measuring success and defining success because it can be defined in many different ways. It can be the number of units you're getting out of this investment, the return on investment in terms of dollars. Some of these metrics won't be available for five, six years when those units are on the ground. You can also look at things like conversations with employers that are coming to the area. So its impact on your economic development. You can look at cost burden down the line. When you get new data, you can look to see if this impacted how many households are spending much on a housing. So you can really look at what it's doing to your gaps, analysis, rental housing gaps. And finally, it can help you identify the most effective strategies and make the case for future investments. So if the strategy works and is successful, however you're measuring it, it promotes continuing that strategy. If it doesn't work, don't keep doing it, right? So just making sure that you have those built-in mechanisms to support that. That's the next one, thank you. So the third recommendation we have is to inventory publicly owned land that may be suitable for housing development. This is a pretty low hanging fruit that is really a long game, right? So this is looking at any public agency's land. So it could be school property that will never be a school, library property that will never be a library. Public works may have excess land, the county may have excess land. And it's potentially putting that land into a land bank so that in the future, you have that land to be able to invest in workforce housing. So the way that this typically would work in a community is you put it in a land bank, you hold it for a number of years, and then that land can be donated, discounted, land leased to a nonprofit or a private sector developer in exchange for affordability of those units. So it really lowers their, it lowers or eliminates their land costs and allows them to provide affordability in the long term. And a program like this can really be any size. So it could be single lots in the community. It could be if you have a big tract of land out there that's tied up in legal battles or something that the city could acquire. It could be pretty any scale.
We bought that. Everybody's kind of thinking, sorry.
Sorry, I brought up an elephant.
Yeah, you did, you did, that's right.
Regardless, this can be a low investment, right? It could just be inventorying properties you already have. Acquiring properties becomes a bit more of an investment, right? But it's a long-term strategy that shows that you're interested in the sustainability of providing housing for your workforce. So we'll move on to the next one, and I want you to ask all of your questions at the end, but please interact me if you could.
I was gonna ask you, what type of database do you use? Do you use a commercial one, Oracle, Cloud, to support and formulate all of the information?
Can you clarify your question? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
What kind of database is compiled to formulate and support all of everything that you're telling us?
There's not a database, I would say. You know, we did the housing needs assessment. We've talked to people in the community. And we developed these recommendations based on our experience working throughout the state and doing these studies and what's been successful in other communities.
I guess one of the questions that we need to clarify for him is, like I said, all this data was from 2019, so you had to gather that from somewhere.
Oh, yes. That would be the census data. We use a sort.
But it's not accurate, though.
Which is why we talk to stakeholders. I hear you. It can be really frustrating, especially in smaller rural communities. Trinidad's not that small, and data is not always accurate. We do also rely on the state demographer.
Well, the census wasn't accurate this time either. Census count.
Yeah, they showed about a 46% lag of people that did not fill out the application. We know you're doing your best, the information provider. We appreciate that. It looks difficult because, and the thing is, the last two years, the housing prices, the way it's gone, it's an anomaly two years. So that's why I mentioned earlier, it's not hard to judge.
Exactly. And to be perfectly honest with you, that's why a lot of these recommendations, you hear me talking a lot about stakeholders, because a lot of sort of our direction we took with the recommendations or this project came directly from speaking with folks who work in the community and where you all are currently at, if that makes sense. Great. So this policy is really about home rehabilitation. As you mentioned, South Central COG already has a program. This recommendation is really to work that program in any way that you can. You could really take a leadership role in inviting developers to get together with contractors and talk it out, figure out what's going on, what can the city do, what can the county do, what can South Central COG do to help shorten this waitlist, right?
Aaron, Aaron is our liaison to the South Central Council. He's on the board. Could you tell us kind of what's happening with their housing program, anything in particular? Why, and why that lag of that, why they're saying it's taken so long to get, other than the contractor?
It really, I mean, it does boil down to contractor availability. We're subject, just like every other user is, to contractor availability. And I mean, given that it's a, it basically boils down to a free market. If they can choose between a lower profit job and higher profit job, it is hard to get the lower profit jobs to be selected sometimes. I mean, a lot of effort is put out in that area. And Jennifer and the team there are actually making steps to improve that specific department. But it's something I can take to the upcoming board meeting. We can definitely have a discussion about it.
And the other thing too is that that program is very well-funded?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty well-funded, I mean.
Have you all ever considered partnering with the college in the trades program to have the work done by students in that?
Yeah, there, there has been some discussion of that, and I don't know the outcome of it. I can definitely find out.
Are you talking about the housing, are you talking about new housing? Are you talking about remodeling apartments? I mean, what exactly are you?
This, the department at South Central COG is for improving the livability of existing homes. So you would not be adding homes, we wouldn't be adding homes to.
But most, but most of your places are pretty full, right? Isn't that, isn't that the issue? Most of the housing that's.
Could we maybe, I hate to suggest this, but maybe make notes of questions we have and maybe we could get through the presentation and do that? I'm sorry, I.
No, it's, I mean, yes.
We're just trying to clarify exactly what's, what we're talking about here. I mean, that's.
Through the COG simply because they're right, they've got a housing program.
Yeah, we're not, we're not adding homes to. It's people on fixed incomes that are requiring some special modification to their home to make it.
That's what we need, yeah.
Go ahead, continue.
Yeah, and I do want to say that I did speak to Trinidad State College and the woman who runs the program there. Their main issue right now is scaling that program. They simply don't have enough folks coming in who would like to participate. I think anything we can do to support growing contractors in Colorado is imperative that we do. We kind of have an innovative recommendation for you all next that is sort of along these lines. The trades program, obviously, it's more of like a long-term investment in contractors in the trades industries. Our next recommendation came out of conversations with stakeholders. If you could go ahead just to the next slide, please, thank you. And that is to bundle improvement projects to attract contractors to the area. So we haven't seen any communities actually do this, but it could be a short-term solution to the problem. And so stakeholders said that potentially the city could help organize or bundle jobs for contractors. So if you have 10 people who need home modifications in here, each of them is only like a $6,000 job, nobody wants to come down to do that, bundle them all together, now it's a $60,000 job, and you can attract a contractor from Pueblo to come on down and take care of that work. So, you know, this could be a list, it could be a database, it could be, you put them all together and send it out to RFP. I'm not exactly sure what it looks like, but it was an idea that came out of stakeholder conversations that I thought was worth throwing out there as a short-term solution to that really long waitlist. Just two more here. This one, increased funding for affordable housing. We recognize you have just made an enormous contribution to affordable housing in your community, and that you're also pursuing additional funding from DOLA to continue that program. This, again, is more of a long-term strategy, recognizing that right now we're sort of in unprecedented times in terms of how much federal funding, state funding is out there for housing, but historically underfunded. And you want to ensure that when all of this incentive money dries up from the state or the federal government, because that can change pretty quickly, that there's potentially a local source that you can draw upon to move your policies forward. I will also mention that a lot of state programs and federal programs require a local match, as you may know. So it's a good idea to have, even if it's a small pot of money around for affordable housing, to have some money around for affordable housing so that you can move when things are happening.
I learned Friday that there's going to be another pot of 300 million in the near future, it sounds like, from the, I think from the state coming down like.
And the final recommendation, we can just move on down to that. So zoning and land use, we touched on this a little bit already. I know that you all were in the process of evaluating zoning and land use. It sounds like maybe that didn't move forward. But in the future, you could strive to increase flexibility and implement best practices in alignment with a comprehensive plan. So in your comprehensive plan, you say to diversify housing types as a goal so that you can meet different lifestyle choices, income ranges, that sort of thing. So just allowing for a little bit more flexibility, but also using a stakeholder and community input as guideposts for that. Where does growth go? Where do we care if there's ADUs? What neighborhoods would we like to protect from ADUs? Who can live in an ADU? These are all questions that you might have to answer as you consider policies like that. A lot of communities in Colorado are tackling this right now. So I just wanted to bring it up as something that you can do to encourage more workforce housing in your community, more on the naturally occurring affordable side. Those starter homes for families moving to the city or seniors looking to downsize that are market-based but more affordable than a single-family detached product. Also, if there are any development incentives from the program that you all are running now, like the TAP fees or something that is successful, because you're measuring the outcomes, you decide, you know, we would like to memorialize that in our zoning and land use code to signal to developers that that is available. That's something that you can do as well. So I just thought I'd throw that into this zoning and land use conversation. With that, that is all I have for you all, and I will let you ask all your questions.
Any questions, Aaron?
Nothing right now, Mr. Man.
Anybody else?
No, the only thing, you know, you've done a pretty good extensive work and done a lot of this stuff here. But again, you know, we need solutions and stuff, and we have, most of the stuff that you have went through, we've already started to do incentive work in that. And I, but I mean, I do appreciate that, but we are bringing in housing to downtown area. Most of the stuff there that we really are trying to accomplish and work on that, so. But, you know, the only question is if the surveys were done and they're, they're gonna work, let's put it that way, to what you addressed here. Is there anything that we can actually do to solve the problem, other than what we're doing? I mean, you're around other cities doing that. Is there anything, and I mean, I don't see anything new there that we haven't done. So I, I mean, that was, that's my only concern, but I do appreciate all the work that you've done.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's a concern that many city councils have throughout the state of Colorado. You know, they're like, we're doing these things, nothing's happening. The reality is that a lot of these things are new for communities like yours. You're starting to make some changes in terms of affordable housing. There is no silver bullet to this. You're not going to build your way out of this tomorrow. You know, it's really a comprehensive package of strategies that you have to weave together to think of, you know, those short-term solutions to issues like I identified. It's one of those longer-term investments you can make. You know, they're not making more land, so you can land make some land down the road 50 years from now. The coal mine has an expansion and you need workforce housing, and you have baked that land, thinking of that future workforce need. So those are some of the considerations. I think it's not just, you know, what are we doing now? But also, how do we make this sustainable long-term for the community?
Thank you.
I'm actually really encouraged because of, as you pointed out, our housing needs assessment drove the decision to do the Housing Now incentive. And I think that the two of those do work really well together. There are some other things that you pointed out that we can do, like make sure that we're measuring outcomes properly and can show that it has made a difference in the long-term and in the short-term because it seems like it is. And then to consider other changes to the land use code that we need to do, I think is something that we do need to spend a little bit of time working on that. And, and I like the part that you pointed out that we can invest in the neighborhoods that are here already and making them more attractive and more just attractive to people moving in from the outside or just to take care of them better. Because it's really important. It says a lot about the people that live here, how we maintain our own individual properties.
It's a beautiful community, and people are not going to stop moving here, right? So it's a good point.
I have a question over here, thank you.
A couple of things that I have. When you're talking about funding, what do you mean by linkage fees?
So linkage fees are essentially an impact fee for affordable housing. So they would apply to both commercial development, industrial development, residential development, anybody comes here and wants to build something, they have to pay a linkage fee, which, like all other impact fees, are tied to a NEXIS study that measures sort of, you know. which, like all other impact fees, are tied to a nexus study that measures sort of, you know, the impact that that development would have on the affordable housing needs in the community. So it's like any other impact fee, like for roads or parks, just to, and when developers pay into that fund, that fund then is used to develop or invest in affordable housing. So that could be a funding mechanism that you all could adopt, that could carry on the longevity of the housing now program. You could adopt a linkage fee, that funds that program for the next however long you want to have that fee.
The one that I think that we probably would stay away from is sales tax.
Yeah.
And the reason being is we're pretty close to the cap. And privately, in the next year or two, we're probably going to be seeing an additional tax coming from the railroad district, rail district, and that their ideas to put together a plan for, and it's going to be up to a 0.08% tax increase to the residents. We'll see what happens with that, so I think you need to be mindful of that.
Yeah.
Property tax is something that people are always concerned about. What was interesting is that there were some people in that you interviewed, they were interested in luxury rental units. That was.
That was interesting, I was going to say, okay. A few people with some big pockets.
Yeah, and that, that was mostly employers who are looking to house, you know, or attract general managers, thanks to the community, want them to be able to have an apartment with a pool and a gym, you know, just some amenities essentially is what they're looking for there.
Explain also, you've got exclusionary buyouts. What do you mean by exclusionary buyouts?
I'm sorry, where are we?
It says, I did put down the page, we talked about inclusionary buyouts.
Inclusionary buyouts, I think I need some context. Are.
I should have, and some of these I wrote down the page, but that one I did not do, but anyways.
It's okay. I mean, it, it brings to mind inclusionary zoning and being able to buy your way out of, essentially pay a fee in lieu of constructing that housing, but that's not one of the recommendations that we have for your community, so I'm not sure.
What else do I have here? One thing that I think that is very interesting is we do have an aging population. And to have housing that is geared toward the people as we age out, back in the peer. And they're.
Right, right.
But I mean, it's interesting, I mean, it was, some of the facts in here were very, were very eye-opening. You know, the 65 to, these age disabilities was interesting. The 65 to 74, there were 39%, 75 and older was 55%, that was interesting. And the other thing was the cognitive disabilities that you, 18 to 64 was higher than the 65 and older. That was, that was interesting. Educational attainment distribution in high schools, you know, also. You know, there was some information in here that was quite, quite eye-opening. COVID impacts, of course, we're pretty well aware of those. You know, the ADUs, some people didn't, absolutely didn't want. But this seemed like the majority of people didn't mind the ADUs. We do have an ADU in place, you know, ADU use and use, and use already, so I don't think that's a major problem there. Like I said, the senior challenges of services and home care. And that's where the program, like the, the South Central Council of Government. And I'm not sure of that. One time there were like three different agencies in town. I'm not sure how many agencies are in town now. Do you know how many?
I do not.
And one time there were like three, and I don't know how many we have left in town. I know COG has one, but.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure how many people you service out there, so. I know at one time it was quite a bit. And like I mentioned earlier, the barriers for development. I guess it just depends who you talk to as to what they, who feels, is, who feels, what is a barrier to an individual or to, you know, it could be this person yes and this person no.
I, I know I've had several people talk with me about desire for independent living kinds of, and then moving into assisted living, some kind of a, it's something that I think would be a great thing for Cougar Canyon is to have some kind of a development out there. And I wondered if you had seen any, any evidence of that desire in your report and your discussions with stakeholders.
You know, in terms of assisted living, I don't think that jumped out as a major need. Folks usually stay downsized, which in aspirationally, we think of as a condo or duplex. But in reality, in a lot of the communities that we're doing work, we've done a lot of focus groups with the senior population. And we're finding that generally folks like their big house until they can no longer care for themselves. So maybe that stepping stone's not as needed, but it could also be some other seniors saying, you know, the type of housing I would like to live in is just not available, like a patio home with a shared courtyard, where you could interact with your neighbors, have a shared community room, activities, that sort of thing. And we're just not building those types of housing units. I think gearing them more towards seniors may get some more of those built. I think just as a product type, developers look what they know, generally speaking. So we don't have a lot of those, and so we just don't see a lot of those coming through.
I'm, I'm seeing people in their late 70s and 80s talking about that, that they just no longer can take care of their home. They need to be in a place where someone has eyes on them. And, and there aren't really any options for that. We don't have that in this community. So I think it is something that we should focus on.
Well, there's one, one developer that, I've been talking to him now for the last couple of years. And he's talking about 93 or 94 units, that's to him, very decent. And he's talking about, where the.
Driving.
Driving vehicles. And he's talking about kind of a, you know, something that's inclusive of everything. And I think that's something that is needed for people who want to retire, where they, you know, people live in their house, but everything on the outside is taken care of for them. And I think that would be something that I think would be ideal to have, hopefully they can move forward with that. We'll see. One of the things with this incentive plan that I think was very well done is that we have two projects that are going to get started that are actually from ground up, housing units. And everybody has a time limit to begin these projects. So I think within the next year, we're going to see, you know, these housing units that we've already given a kind of a green light, beginning green light, we still have another process to go through. But I think that we'll have some housing on the ground. We'll see what the mine does, about bringing in, I'm going to call and find out, see where they're at with hiring more people, because that's been one of their problems, was housing. So we'll see what happens there. You know, the Lytec housing is something that you said is really concerning, because that's that area of that 30 below, we didn't make it. And how, you know, how do you really afford that? You know, it's really, it's difficult to me.
Yeah.
The one thing that I'm, I'm not too keen on, to make a kind of a recommendation, was to 20% allocation for homeless. And I think that that's an area that I think is going to be difficult to do, because we have so many other things that we have to deal with. And my big issue with homeless is how many of them really are interested in, in apartments? I'll give this example, a couple of years ago, I was watching television, there was a documentary that was done in Las Vegas, Nevada. And what happened was they went out looking for somebody that would go, they had new units to put people in, they found one person. They took him, they put him in, they went back a month later and he was gone. They ended up finding him back out on, you know, in the streets. And he told them, I just couldn't get him to live that way. So how many of these people are really going to take advantage if we were to do homeless? You know, look what's happening in, in Seattle. It, it's a disaster. Because they're, they're trying to build their way out of homeless. I'm not really sure if there is an answer to homeless right now.
Yeah. And I, I don't think that was part of our recommendations from the housing needs assessment, to put money towards homelessness. But I will say that we do a lot of work around that issue. And housing alone is never going to be successful without supportive services to go along with that. A lot of homeless folks that we've spoken to in focus groups and things, you know, and a lot of providers have told us that a lot of homeless folks, especially if they've been living on the street, don't know how to live in a housing unit and clean and cook for themselves. Some do, don't get me wrong, like the population is as varied as the general population is. They look like everyone you know. But for a subset of that population, specifically the chronically homeless who maybe have substance use disorders or mental illness, they particularly need social services to make that a success. So just building the units, as Seattle has learned, does not solve the problem, right?
I know I did say in your somewhere about allocation 20% or something like that.
Mr. Mayor, it's in the PowerPoint and it's under the first goal. And it's just an example, it's not a recommendation.
Yeah, like I said, there was a lot of stuff that I read and you did cover most of it, so. You know, just the, like you mentioned, the decrease in population was inaccurate, we felt like it's inaccurate. The school enrollment, of course, you know, is quite alarming. The basis, of course, was used by the Trinidad School District, but what's happening is the other two school districts, the other three actually, Branson, Holley and Primero, have increased their population, because that's where a lot of the kids belong to, so. There you go, we're trying to figure that one out. The school district here is trying to figure out how to bring them back, your stump doesn't know how to do that. Anyway, that, that, those are all the questions that I have. Any others? Do you have any comments, Steve?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no, no additional comments, appreciate the presentation. I think we have some stuff to digest and make some decisions on going forward.
Right, okay.
Thank you so much for your time this evening, you guys are doing great work.
I guess, I guess a matter of, you know, what members of your team are you going to be able to tackle this week? What more stuff to do?
If it's on the list.
Wally?
I know, it's right there, we never saw you.
Okay, on to item three, discussion of municipal broadband next steps.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to take a little bit of time to, to give you more details on what's going on with broadband. Obviously, that's a very important issue for our community right now. At the last council meeting, I gave you just a brief update, but I wanted to kind of tell you about some other things that are happening. There, there's a lot of momentum this week particularly on broadband. So I think most of you know, but the SCOG tomorrow has a planning summit. And one of the issues is broadband, so I will be attending that.
Oh, Wednesday?
I'm sorry, is it Wednesday? Are we only on Monday?
Yeah.
Don't, don't push it too fast.
It feels like it's Tuesday already.
It's rough Monday.
Yes, so Wednesday, there will be that meeting to talk about, you know, regional broadband issues. So we'll get some information, we'll get some information back to you all based on that discussion. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with representatives from the town of Estes Park. And they are kind of the gold standard for municipal broadband deployment. So I really want to start getting some initial information of what their triumphs were, what their challenges were, what their lessons learned are, especially as we begin, you know, our process of formulating how we want to proceed on this issue. I think we all agree that there's a definite need for broadband in our community. And how we go about tackling that is still, you know, what we're working on. I have a call out to Tara Marshall from DOLA to talk about funding opportunities that we may be entitled to soon for extending broadband and getting more robust connections to our community. So I will let you know what happens on that, hoping to meet with her this week. As I mentioned last time, the mayor and I met with representatives of DOLA and then also DOT to talk about using their fiber network, their infrastructure, to bring more robust service to Trinidad. So we're still pursuing that, but we do have the option available. And so as we proceed forward, it's nice to know that we won't have to run a fiber line from here to Colorado Springs. But we can piggyback off of DOTs and I think that'll be really helpful for us. So obviously, we have Senate Bill 152, and we have our ballot question coming up in November, which is a required step to ask our voters if they would even approve the deployment of the municipal broadband network. So that's something that has to get answered as we move forward in the process. The thought would be that it will get approved by the voters. There's not really many community, key communities where that hasn't been approved. And then from there, we've, we've checked off that step in the process to consider if we want to do our own municipal broadband. But ultimately, I think what we're leading up to is getting a feasibility study done that just explores all the options. I'd like to look at the, you know, performas of if we were to deploy our own network, what does that look like? What does our revenue look like? What is the commitment on infrastructure to deploy that network? Also get some, some feedback as to what partnering with our service providers that exist would look like as well. And then the one thing I really want to do is a current service assessment as part of that plan. So we have a really good understanding of where we have portions in the community that need more robust internet access and what our overall status looks like compared to a lot of other communities who are in the same boat as us. So that's kind of where we're at, but I also wanted to take the opportunity with you, you all here to get any direction or answer any questions that you may have otherwise at this point.
Questions?
No, Steve, I, I think in that survey, you're going to find out that a lot of residents are probably really don't care about 5G. Right now, I know a lot of businesses are, it's imperative that they have a faster internet connection speed. But a lot of residents, even at the radio station, I mean.
Yeah.
Comcast has dropped balls so many times that they're with us, it's like, you know, well, there's a fiber line cut somewhere, well, between here and where?
Yeah, 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 loud and clear. No, I don't have any questions.
So I, I, what would having broadband do for Trinidad? That's what I, I've read stuff about broadband and I, and I have now established a good connection for my house. It took a lot of work, but I have one. But what would it do? What do our service providers, which I understand to be CCOM and Comcast, Xfinity, do they have access to broadband here or not?
And CenturyLink as well.
And CenturyLink, yeah.
Yeah, so they could deploy a more robust broadband network if they wanted to, but they're not doing that right now. And you can make assumptions as to why. Their business model might be supporting their operations to an extent that it's not worth their investment into the community. So some areas, we do have very fast internet in the community. And it's probably adequate for economic development purposes and everything that we're trying to accomplish. What we want to do is make sure that we're poisoning ourselves for development going forward, particularly on the economic development side. I would hate to have to say no to a business or have a business turn us down because we couldn't provide reliable internet, something that simple.
So does 5G come with broadband? I know that when I go up to the Springs or something and my phone's like 5G, it works faster and that's nice.
So the general sentiment right now in the community, as far as I understand it, is that direct wired connections are still preferable. And that's why we talk about fiber and extending infrastructure and spending it into that. However, I think times are changing, and I think our wireless options are getting much more reliable, much more robust. So one of the things I want us to be cautious of as we go through these conversations is, you know, does it make sense to deploy fiber to every home in our community? Or is it better to monitor what's happening with technology trends and see if maybe a wireless mesh network might be better? I think all of that will come out of the feasibility study. And James also will, will help me present to you all sometimes, he has, sometime soon, he has some thoughts as well on ways we can do this. So I think the mayor's goal, and I'm paraphrasing, but tell me if I'm wrong, is really as simple as just ensuring that we have reliable internet service throughout our community and, and poisoning ourselves for future development. And I think that's really what we're trying to accomplish in this. How we do that is what we'll spend, you know, the next couple of months for sure diving into.
The other thing that'll help there too is, you know, if we have our own, is it, we're more than likely reduce the cost to the end user. And that's one of the other, that's one of the other things that I think that'll help, because everybody's trying to find a little less of a cost, but still. And actually, increasing the speed of, of the product, I think is also important, especially if you're going to attract businesses into the community. There's a, we had a meeting at the college with a company that down the road might come into the community or may consider. And I told them what we were trying, that we may, we're going to be looking into broadband.
Yeah.
And the guy that was there said that would be essential for them to be able to come to Trinidad. And it's a technique, it's a tech company.
Yeah.
So these are, and the tech companies especially, they need that fast internet service, that 5G. And the big problem that we have here, talking to James, is we have areas that are not served. There's areas that are served and there's areas that are underserved. And that is one of the biggest hoops that we're going to have to jump through. And there was something that I think that then people last week told us to do to, it was, it was something you jump on your computer and it measures it at a certain time.
Yeah, there's a, a speed test website. And it, you know, you can use it on a mobile device, you can use it on any computer that you have connected and it'll tell you what your speeds are. And that's all, if you go to O T H dot net, go with net, on any device, that's the gold standard.
Yeah, and another issue that, that we've had with the internet here in town is that Comcast, some of them don't upgrade their equipment.
Yeah.
To make it, and that, that's kind of like what we need to really find out is some of this stuff isn't even available to, you know, to home people. I know I talked to Infinity and they were going to give me this and then the lady tells me, oh, I can't do it, it's not available in your area. So we need to kind of find out if, if their broadband or something will take care of that. And so that, I think that's a real important thing there is the availability and, and that it's, the town can get everything that's available out there instead of giving you, well, you can get this and then a few minutes later she tells you you can't get that because it's not available. So that makes it kind of.
That's their standard.
And a lot of it had to do with their upgrade equipment. They, they figured Trinidad's not worth bringing the stuff down there, especially Comcast. They, the guy told us that.
CCOM.
Now, the rest of them may be a little different.
CCOM wants a big audience.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and so, and I gave you the wrong website, I apologize. It's okla, O O K L A dot net. And I'll email that out to everyone too. But yeah, that's the speed test website. Yeah, no, those are all very, very good points. And then the other thing that I think that we sometimes forget about are our cell network providers as well. And they're providing very fast speeds right now. And they're going to continue to bolster their infrastructure. T-Mobile and I think Verizon now are pushing home internet options for customers as well. So you get a device that connects to the cell network and you get broadband through their, through their cell network. And so to my point earlier about things getting more reliable in the wireless community, I think that's demonstrative of that. So that's something I would like to include in our study as well, how those players can get.
One of the things that was discussed when we met is that middle mile.
Yeah.
And the middle mile would be that you take and you string a loop around Trinidad.
Yeah.
And then what you do is from that, you can take and use Wi-Fi from there and as it becomes more reliable, it makes sense rather than stringing to every individual household.
Yeah.
And the business is more than likely would like hardwired, but.
Yeah.
I think individuals would like, may not need that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think part of your feasibility information too would be helpful to know is how much these things are going to cost.
That's a big part of it.
Because there are quite a few people who just can't afford, you know, to have Verizon provide it or anybody provide it, so.
Absolutely. And I think that, to the mayor's point earlier, that's, that's one of the balances. Providing our own network and infrastructure arguably makes it lower cost to the end user, but obviously there's a significant capital investment that we'd be committing to get there. So balancing all of those things out is what I think the feasibility study will do for us.
And that's why I say we still have that ARPA funding of a million dollars to, to work on, on broadband and we could leverage that for additional funding through DOLA or whoever.
Yeah.
So that would be, that'd be something that gets us going.
So generally, as I understand the consensus is we will seek a study, to commission a study as, as the next step.
Yeah.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, those three guys that we met with last week, they were all, there was one guy that did, could even be part of it.
Yeah.
Or he could recommend somebody, but that's what he does.
I think, I mean, in my mind, we would want to be super, super sure that the person we find, this is a statement that is always true, obviously. However, I think it's especially true this, we need to find someone, an agency that's incredibly competent in this because the stakes are super high, right? Like, you know, we don't want 10 years from now, none of us want 10 years from now that council sitting there and saying, man, that council from 2022 sold us with this. Because to be honest, if you look at the FCC, FCC defines broadband as 25 megabits per second down and three up. And I, I did, no, it's not much at all. I, I did, um, these are actual speed tests, I didn't use that. I used, um, what's my, what is my IP address dot com. It's, it's, it's a real site, they measure latency. I forget the, oh, jitter. It's been a long time since I've talked to internet. The origination endpoint. So we have three primary vendors. One of them provided 259.9 down and 11.6 up. That's a, that's really, really good speed. I mean, there's no problems there. The other one provided 86 down and 134 up. To be honest, I was sitting here today, I wonder what it did. And I think the way those speed tests work is that's what this computer has access to. It's going through internet access modem that's going to, I think, share that bandwidth. So that's what's available to this computer. And then I have, our neighborhood is not super, has, doesn't have great connectivity because of where we're at. It's an older system. It is a local network provider, but I'm getting 30 down and 20 up. So my connectivity still exceeds the standard for broadband access. And this is my point. We need to be absolutely certain that we're solving a problem. And I think that would be part of the study.
Yeah.
What, what is the access in every geographic region of the town? What's available? What does it cost? And if we were to roll out this program, how much will the build out cost? And what, I think you already mentioned that, how much will the subscriber be responsible for? Because to build the system, we are responsible to build the whole system, whether we get one subscriber or all subscribers. So we could be leaving future councils, if we do it as an enterprise fund, which I think we're kind of discussing, we could be leaving ourselves with a really big millstone around our neck. I think if, if we had to make a decision today, I think the argument would be made to light up those fibers to town, build a new hub here and allow local providers to connect to here and significantly decrease the latency to the northern hubs. Because you can tell when you do these tests, they all connect to points north of Colorado Springs, Denver, I think, and to Councilman DeBono's point, I don't know where the, is that fiber terminate at the south end of the state or are they connecting?
Right at the end of the state.
It's unfortunate because if we could get into a ring, when fibers are severed northwest and they will be due to construction accidents, we could always back the. But, you know, that's for future discussion. Oh, and the last point, I promise. The last point, I, wireless is exponentially, right now, if you use business Starlink, they can give you 500, 500 down and 200 up. I mean, that's, that's incredible speed. And history proved demonstrably that technologies, and you said this, technologies of emerging, sorry, emerging technologies going to gain speed and decrease cost. So as they increase the Starlink net, the speeds are going to go up, costs are going to go down. My opinion is we, I think in the study and a super quality study, super imperative otherwise we're.
Right now, like Starlink, what is their cost to the?
You know, I, I don't, I don't know the cost of that, Mayor, but I was actually trying to find it earlier. I, I think it really depends oddly where you're at. Well, yeah, right now, in town, I don't think you can unless you're a business, like you have to be. I believe so. Like you have to be not connected to the network at this point in their phasing of the program. Like right now, it's only available to those that are outside of the Wi-Fi area as they build up the network. Because if they were to like connect everybody into it right now, it would spread out the signal, weaken the signal for everybody. And so over time, they're like phasing it in. But, I mean, you'd, you'd probably agree too, Wally, right? Like the speeds are going to go up and costs are going to go down.
I, I believe so. And I believe from talking to James Rowley, he believes so too. So yeah, that's something to consider as you.
And to your point is that no matter what we do, their technology's going to get better too. So their stuff's going to be upgraded. So even if we get whatever, broadband or whatever, eventually it's not going to go out. They're just going to increase and make it better for us. So I don't know if we really look at putting a rock around our neck and sinker or something, but, because their technology's just going to get better no matter what.
No, I, I mean, the rock around our neck would be spending money to, to build a network that requires maintenance going forward.
And then it becomes integrated.
What's that?
And then it becomes integrated.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's the whole idea is, you know, even though that we may be able to fund the cost upfront to do all that, but just to make sure that whatever we charge for services, that there is money being able to be put aside for upgrades and also for the people that we have to hire.
Yeah, but to, to counter that point though. I like history references. I, I think we're looking at opening a Conestoga wagon factory at about 1900 because the horseless carriage is coming, meaning wagons. That's the best way.
I guess my bottom line is I just don't want our access to be a hindrance to any businesses that are thinking of locating here. That, you know, I, you can get internet here, that's not the issue, but is it a sufficient, does it provide enough data transfer and speed? Is it secure enough? Is it back, you know, is there a back support for it so that if it fails and that business won't completely shut down? Those are the things that I'm most concerned.
Well, like right now, I don't think that that's reliable.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not, but like the fiber path, the new fiber path that's followed down is effectively the same fiber path. So until we get connection south, you're subject to one point being damaged and you lose the whole connection. That being said though, that's why I'm saying it's imperative that who we have, who we commissioned to do this study is, is super well versed in this, obviously.
Yeah.
There's going to be a lot of questions, of course.
Yeah.
But I think it's something that we just need to investigate because if we're going to move forward with trying to be able to track businesses here, like Aaron was saying, that is something we do have to look at. You know, download, how the technology will change in five years, 10 years, we don't know. We know, we know it will change, but to what degree, we don't.
Well, thank you all. I did write hindrance to business development as a provision for the study as well. I think that's really important.
Yeah.
During current assessment of where we're at. So it sounds like we're all on the same page of doing something, figuring out what that is.
Well, I'm glad that you are going to have that conversation with Estes Park.
Yes.
To see how long they've had it.
Yeah.
How it's working for them, what the costs are.
Yeah.
You know, how, how big of a clientele that they have within their community that they service. Those type of things are important to bring back to us.
And I'm going to ask them if they've gone through a study process as well and see if I can get a copy of it.
And they might have, recognition of someone like you talking about who did their study, that would be a lot.
Yeah, exactly. So great, I think, I think this is really important for our growth in development and I'm glad we're talking about this and look forward to continuing the conversations. I hope you have more questions.
Okay, item four, second quarter 2022 financial report.
You save the best for lunch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Boy, you're really trying to get, getting, getting good with your.
That's, that's because you did see how this, my day started at 10:00.
Well, Cheryl, just looking at the numbers up to right now, a little on the bleak side. And I, I think the whole thing boils down to is, I was going to mention, I think just tinying our bouts in areas that we can. I think that's going to be really, really. And the last time that we recommended that was a couple of years ago, COVID came around, staff stepped up to the plate, did just that. And they took care of business and kept us on track to where we needed to be. So I think they can do it again.
Sahina?
Yeah.
The one thing that I was going to mention before she gets started is, you know, when she gets to the electrical department, I think that with the new rate study that we have, that will stabilize, just like that's what's happened with the gas department and stabilized it. And I think by the increases that we're going to have through the electrical department and stabilize, you know, that utility cost. Is that what you think, Cheryl?
Better. Definitely. Alrighty, so we're just going to go ahead and jump right into general fund revenues. Like we always start off with general fund. You'll see in a quarter, second quarter 2022 that our revenues are undercollected by 0.22% or $35,000. That doesn't look so bleak when you add them all together, but when you take a look at the sales tax, yes, we are undercollected by $230,000. As compared to second quarter 2021, we were under, or we were actually over, I apologize, we're under by 400 and, oh, where's my number? However, we budgeted conservatively in 2022, which is typically what I do. So we're not seeing as drastic a decrease if we were to budget using 2021 figures. So I did post July sales tax, I just received them at the end of the week last week. That number has shrunk for our under collection from 230,000 to 291,000. July is our biggest sales tax month, so that's the reason for the shrink. The shrinking, however, is of course based on the sales tax of, the general sales tax on marijuana and marijuana sales are just, they're just down, they're extremely down. Our marijuana sales tax are undercollected by $187,000. And we have not seen an increase. I did compare, I can work that down. Or, or actually you saw the difference in the revenue or the retail of marijuana when we did our third, second quarter request, allocation request for marijuana funding. In 2021, retail sales were 18,285,000. And in 2022, retail sales were 9.8 million. So it's nearly 50% decrease.
Wow.
Yep. Anyway, so a good thing about the marijuana sales tax is that council allocates funding after we've collected it, so we're not banking on that funding and that's, that's going to save us.
You know, that was the whole reason back in 2017 when we started collecting that, you know, I made a recommendation that we put, put money aside in a rainy day fund and of course we've allocated that money elsewhere, but that's something can we, if we need to reallocate that money back into the general fund?
We could, however, a lot of, at least, a good portion of that money has been used for the $2 million for the economic development or housing incentive. So, but it is still accumulating funding and, you know, if there's something in there, we can backtrack to it if we have to. Hopefully, when we do our budget cycle this season, we're able to figure out a way not to have to dip into that until we absolutely have to. Our intergovernmental revenue is under expended by 274,000. The reason for that skewing is we have included the EPA Brownfields grant at 578,000. Well, obviously, we're not going to expend all of that money to submit for reimbursement this, by the end of 2022. So it's skewing it. So there's $578,000 we're saying is going to come in, but it's not. It's, we're going to have to allocate that over the next three years. As a matter of fact, we've only drawn $63,000 in that Brownfields grant through June, so.
Do we have a time frame to utilize that?
Three years.
Three years, okay.
Are there any questions on general fund revenue?
And then, just like you mentioned, just watch her, never baltam, basically.
Budgeting season that's coming up is going. Budgeting season that's coming up is gonna be very... It's just gonna be different than what it's been in the previous years, because we're gonna have to take...
And I think, you know, it's a reawakening to where we need to go. I just, I just believe that over the next, I mean, we've had, you know, with Covid and everything that's been going on, the gas prices this year drove a lot of the business down. A lot of this stuff has happened, and hopefully that, I think that it'll recover. But it may be another year to, that's why I say this. Rainy day funds, hopefully that if we need to use it to kind of keep us where we need to be, and help us.
And you'll see revenues over expenditures are one-point-three-million dollars difference. I don't want you to panic. We did, or we did expend, well, we'll get into expenditures. But in April, we paid out the ARPA premium pay or the Covid relief fund, and that hit our books in April. We received the funding from ARPA in July. So that will offset when we look at it next quarter. We're gonna have another million dollars in there to cover that shortage. Also, well, let's just get into expenses. Are there any other questions on revenues? Okay, so expenses through twenty twenty-two second quarter, you'll notice that all of our departments are over-expended, and that is exactly why. The premium pay for the ARPA funding or Covid relief fund, none of that was budgeted to be expended, and then every employee got the six-thousand-dollar premium pay. So that's gonna, that kind of messed with our budgets a little. Also, hurting our budgets are fuel costs. Most departments are blown out of the water with fuel costs. That's just not something that we saw coming. We'll try to catch up with it next year, but it's just, it's so, it fluctuates so much, we don't know where we're going with fuel. But anyway, general fund is over-expended by seven-point-six percent, or one-point-two million, and we're going back to the seven-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars that was used in general fund to do that premium pay. And then also included in there is the encumbrance for the fire department apparatuses that were ordered. Those apparatuses cost one-million dollars. So that's what's making our general fund look over-expended. If you recall, that one-million dollars for the fire department apparatuses is going to be covered by our reserves. So we do have one-million dollars sitting in reserves to cover those fire departments, or I should say committed. Are there any questions regarding general fund?
That one-million dollars from ARPA, will that still do us? Have we received that yet?
So yes, we've received both portions. One, the million dollars that we received last year is sitting in deferred revenue. And that's the mark, that's the money that's earmarked for buyback.
Okay.
The million dollars that, the second tranche that we received came in in January, or, excuse me, in July, and that's what's covering these, the premium pay.
Okay.
Okay, oops, now I always forget to choose these.
So the imbalance for the premium pay, that's transient, it won't be visible as we go forward? It should even out?
It'll even out. All the departments will look over-expended, but we're gonna have the revenue to offset it on the other side.
Okay.
Yes. You'll see that in this third quarter. Okay, so when we move on to power and light. The power and light revenue through second quarter is under-collected by two-point-one percent, or a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars. Again, this is a seasonal fund. The hotter months are technically July through September. We did have a mild being in June, so the, you know, the people use their air conditioning in the hotter months. So we should see an increase. We were starting to pull those figures in now. I actually didn't compare them for third quarter, but that's usually when this, this fund gains its revenue. And our power and light expenditures through second quarter are, is, the revenue is, or, excuse me, the expenditures are point-seven percent, or over-budget by fifty-four thousand dollars. And you're gonna see that there, most of the salaries are gonna be over-expended, except for this particular one, because we have a vacancy. But, let's see, I lost my place. So, in the revenue, you'll see that I've transferred in ninety-two thousand dollars, and that's the ARPA funding to cover that particular fund. So we received the ARPA funding in the general fund, and now we're gonna disperse it through our utilities to cover those expenditures. Power and light is over-expended by fifty-four thousand dollars, and the majority of it, again, is in general administration, and that has to do with the premium pay. And then distribution is also over-expended, and this year, Mike Valentine had the power and light off, or department order more wire for stock, just because they were extremely low and it was just a critical time. We were able to get the amount that was needed partially for the La Partra project, and then he just had him order just as much for stock.
And the prices still go up, so, I mean.
Yes.
We're just, I don't know if you know this or not, but were they able, because some of the other components at power and light are absolutely needed, there was a recommendation that to try to look at maybe buying some additional material. Do you know if that was done, or if that's still?
I know this was a big portion of it, and I'm not sure what's other items that they need, and I don't know if they purchased it, but just whatever Mike pushed through at that time.
Yeah.
Cheryl?
Yes.
These screens aren't working.
Okay, just wanted to, I have mine, but I don't, never again.
Alright, and then I just wanted to note that there's the capital outlay expenditure of two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand. That is for the forty-one-sixty relay breaker project. That's currently under construction. We transferred three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars into power and light to cover this project. However, when the engineers got here, that wasn't gonna be enough to cover it. So we will be transferring in some cultivation money to cover the remaining balance of this project, because power and light just couldn't support this project on its own.
How much was the additional?
I wanna say two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, but we'll know a little bit more once the projects come to be.
Just curious.
Yeah, and you'll see that transfer when we present, when we amend the budget towards the end of the year. Alrighty, we are on to the water fund. Revenue collected through the second quarter for the water fund is under-collected by a hundred-and-eighteen thousand, or four-point-six percent. We will see that increase again July through September. That's when our people are using the water to, or are watering their lawns, and we see the increase typically in the third quarter. It's a seasonal fund, that's just kind of how it goes. Again, you'll see a transfer in, in the water fund of seventy-six thousand dollars. That's related to the ARPA premium pay. Our water expenses are over-expended by twenty-six-hundred dollars. It's not significant at all. However, if you take a look at distribution, it's over-expended by six-to-one thousand dollars. There's a project that was put in that department that was not included in the budget, is a water main stabilization project in Jansen. So they're gonna access water cultivation fees to cover that, because it wasn't budgeted.
How much was needed for that?
Um, let's see, I believe it was around twenty-nine thousand. And then also, they are stocking, they're building their stock as well, just catching up. Just, again, the prices are making a big difference. Finally, North Lake shows a large, significant over expenditure, and that's, we had to pay eighteen thousand dollars for wind damage at the actuator, for the actuators at the plant, I don't know if that means, but eighteen thousand dollars. We did receive insurance proceeds in August to offset that, so that expense will come right back down. Alrighty, are there any questions with water?
My numbers, I can't see them. Expenditures. Majority's pretty much seven.
I'm sorry, you couldn't see?
No, on my screen here, it's pretty jaded.
On the last one, they were, there were some that were bright, under water, but this one, that's actually.
Mr. Mayor, we'll get you a better scanner of the report. I'm noticing that too.
I need better eyes.
Yeah.
About four-hundred-and-fifty-nine over. As we move forward in that imbalance due to the seasonal issue, correct? How much is that likely?
So water will still see a revenue, or expense over revenue. Again, we're doing the water study to get those rates increased, but they are dipping into their reserves to cover their operations. The idea behind the meter project was to make sure that all the meters were working correctly and that we were billing customers correctly before we moved forward with all these studies. Now, to make sure, I mean, because now we found out we have all these meters that are working correctly, and we still do need to do these rate increases.
Well, I think there is a lot of meters that are still not completely installed, there's still...
Majority, water and power, at least ninety percent complete.
Are we, just out of curiosity, are we having troubles with the company and product?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we actually had a meeting with them this morning, and we are, I would say, making some significant headway on getting the problem, the project completed. But we are, we're meeting with them weekly, we're lighting a fire under them, trying to get this going as quickly as possible.
Yeah, because it's been going on for...
Too long.
I suspect it probably is the case, and sorry, Cheryl, I don't need your time, but with the meters, it's probably the larger customers are done first, right? I mean, when and where possible, I imagine.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Williams, I think that's correct, but we can check on that for you as well.
I, I do believe that water... It could be power that didn't get the bigger meters yet, they were special order.
Oh, that's right.
I believe that they're waiting on those, I'm pretty sure, and that's why we're, that's still at ninety percent. So we're still waiting on those. So, we move on to the gas fund. Gas fund, our revenue was over-collected by thirteen-eight-six, or four-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars, another seasonal fund. If we compare it to our first quarter of twenty twenty-two, we were over-collected by five-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand. So as the season progresses, it starts to eat away at that over-collection in the gas revenue that'll be utilized and eaten up in the coldest quarter, which is the fourth quarter.
But at least at this point in time, it's the only utility that's showing.
It always is the only utility, but you're not seeing what's on the backside. So the reason for the gas rate increase is that our gas supply charge is not enough, and so we're throwing a lot. So we get billed a certain amount, but we're only collecting a certain amount on the gas supply charge, so we're under-collected in gas, gas by nearly a million dollars at this point. However, when it's warm, seasonally, those gas bills go down, and that under-collection goes the opposite way, except for now, because they increased the gas rate prices. That's why they're asking for the gas rate increase. So, anyway. Again, we'll highlight the ARPA transfer in for the premium pay of fifty-six thousand dollars to cover the gas Covid pay, the gas department Covid pay. And then, our expenses are under by three-point-five percent, or a hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars. Gas department always has a revenue over expense, about six-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. By the end of the year, it tapers down to about two-hundred thousand, perhaps, so. There are no questions, we'll move on to the sewer fund. Our sewer fund revenue is under by ninety-eight hundred dollars. It's related to water, more watering, more sewer, charges for service. So we'll see that increase in the next quarter. And then expenses are under-expended by ninety-eight hundred dollars. Okay, any questions for sewer?
The infrastructure grant, a negative of a hundred-and-sixty-four, why?
So we have one remaining grant that they just couldn't figure out. The way it was written, they weren't, the scope, they weren't able to fit into the project into something elsewhere. We expended much less than we, than what it was originally used, and I think this was the sliplining grant. But I believe Jenny Jackson with engineering said they may have found another place to be able to utilize this, but I don't know the location. See, I bet Bob's still listening. This is boring. Anyway, so that's, that's a grant that we have not expended against, nor requested refunds.
Okay, so it's almost, it's, it's negative?
It's just negative because we haven't requested reimbursement, yes.
Because I couldn't, I couldn't make the numbers out of?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. Alrighty, we'll move on to landfill. Revenue is over-collected by one-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty dollars. I'll highlight the seventy-seven thousand, that was trans, oh, excuse me, that's not it. It's about twenty-seven thousand dollars that was transferred in for the Covid premium pay. The other fifty thousand dollars was a transfer in from marijuana allocation to cover the purchase of the wheel loader. And then our expenditures, expenditures are under-collected, or, excuse me, under-expended by two-point-nine percent, or nineteen thousand dollars. And then, we'll just reference the capital outlay of two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars for that wheel loader, which we hope to receive in the next...
This week, I hear.
Oh, that's great. So, it went from May to this week.
So does it look like maybe in the future, we might have to have another small increase, maybe to service, to get that on a good playing level?
Yes, it'll require an increase. If you just take a look at the twenty-twenty-two budget column for landfill, you see that our budget is five-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars, but our expenditures are six-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah. I think that, is that something that I know that, that I think, that I think that we still charge pretty low service fee compared to other communities?
Yeah. Would you mind, I'm sorry, Cheryl, reviewing the seventy-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars of the transfer?
Okay, the transfer, so there's fifty thousand dollars in there for the transfer from allocate marijuana to cover the wheel loader first, or down payment. And then the remainder is the Covid premium pay.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, almost there. The lottery fund. We are over-collected by eighty-seven hundred dollars, and we are over-expended by seventy thousand dollars. This fund usually sees all its activity in the second and third quarters. However, the swimming pools pump and motor went out this year, so they had to spend an additional nineteen thousand dollars, or, excuse me, ten thousand dollars to replace that pump and motor. And then under equipment, that's over-expended. We didn't budget anything in that line, and but we did buy six of the thirty-six-gallon trash receptacles that match the trash receptacles throughout town, and they're rather expensive. Those are twelve thousand dollars. But that's what the lottery fund is for.
Were the heating outlets just aging, or?
Yeah, we're gonna, that type of, those bigger expenditures, every year, I believe, with that. Alrighty, on to the tourism fund. Our revenue is over-collected by fifty-seven thousand dollars, and it also includes fifteen... a fifteen thousand dollar transfer in for the premium pay. There's it's and it includes fifty thousand dollars for uh the event planner's salary that's funded by that was funded by um the marijuana um allocation, however, now it's covered by the general fund subsidy that's given to that general fund receives from marijuana. Anyway, we transferred in fifty thousand dollars to cover event planner's salary. And then our expenditures are over by sixty four thousand dollars. Fifty two thousand of that is in the tourism line item, and that's because they encumber their billboard expenses at the beginning of the year. Those are, you know, uh twenty thousand dollar, is that right? I mean, ten thousand dollar billboards, but they have several of them. They encumber them at the beginning of the year, so the expense is higher just throughout uh the quarters. Any questions on tourism? And finally, we're on to capital. Uh, does does new city manager know that he gets quizzed on this after?
Yeah, I know. That's right.
Our answer is A.
Our capital fund, our revenue recognized um is eight point six million. We did recognize the money from Colorado Creative, the grants for Space to Create and Fox West Theater that totaled five million. We ended up recognizing them this year versus last year uh because we didn't have those expenses against them last year, so it's just easier to pull that money in this year. And uh you'll see that, you know, we've collected more than uh we anticipated just because we didn't budget it that way last year. Our Fox West Theater project is moving along accordingly. They, you know, every quarter and every month, we're submitting for reimbursement against those grants. And then we're also waiting for the First Street project to take off. That's going to drive a lot of the factors in our next um budget, depending on what those numbers come in at. We don't know how much we won't be able to use for other projects because pretty much all of that's going to take, uh that project is going to take majority of the funding. But you do remember council committed two point six million dollars and then another, I think, three million dollars for this, the First Street project, so hopefully that's going to be enough to cover it, but again, but once we get that bid, it's going to be the big driving factor for the next year's budget. And then.
When do you, Bob, when do you anticipate that bid to go out?
Keep our fingers crossed, the next couple of weeks. We're getting close.
And then finally, you'll see activity in the La Parta Americana Road project and Space to Create. Hopefully, we're getting those moving along, getting completed and closed out and off the books. Other questions?
Where's the pot of gold that came to the?
Last year, we had a big pot of gold.
And Mayor Council, I, the only thing I would add at this point, thank you, Sheriff, anyway. One thing that I'll be working with Sheriff on is just general conversations about revenue diversification for the city. Um, I think we all like having money and uh being able to do good things for our community, and we want to do whatever we can to keep that at a high level.
We're all.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, uh, Hunt, any other items for discussion for future meetings? More questions?
We have one update from Bob on the striping.
Okay, Bob, what do you got?
And you do you have seventeen minutes until the game starts.
Because I know Mr. Downs wants to go cheer for the.
I must can be here all night.
That's right.
Yeah.
Here, Bob, here's my Russell Wilson.
Strike me.
I know where you're at. Yes, that's okay. Good, okay, so last uh council meeting, we got a bid from Roadway City for a hundred and ninety eight thousand two hundred and sixty six dollars, but we did not have grinding in it. So I reached out to them to get a grinding cost, and we thought that we could put the epoxy paint on on the bricks, and they came back and quoted said they don't put epoxy paint on the bricks for the pavement markings. They use this MMA, and excuse me, I don't know what that acronym stands for. It's it's like.
Martial arts.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's similar to to the preformed thermal, but it's it's a it's a little different product. But anyway, uh, Mr. Eaton went through and he uh he took out the grinding because we can't grind the bricks, and he took out the thermoplastic that we were going to put on the bricks, added the MMA to the bricks, and the grand total came in at two hundred and thirty six thousand, one hundred and sixty eight bucks, forty three cents. That will be an item that comes out of the capital improvement.
He keeps looking at Sheriff.
I'm going to look at her because it's the green light on spending, so. Which is reasonable. We had guesstimated two hundred and ninety thousand plus or minus.
That's with, that is with the grind.
That is with the grind against everything and the MMA in lieu of the thermoplastic. We'll still use the thermoplastic in the asphalt areas, but where we have bricks, we're going to use the MMA uh markings.
Yeah, you weren't sure what that grinding would be, but it come in, looks like it came in less than what?
It came in, in my opinion, reasonable. This is like seventy cents a square foot, so.
Questions? No, just good job, just get it done.
Yeah, I have to be, I was expecting a lot of bigger hit for the grinding. To be honest. He already did, he actually put a number on it.
So is that grinding like glazing? Is, you know, when you grind, is it like a glazing?
I don't, it's just recessing the asphalt, so they'll probably grind out the existing strike, but the good thing is, if you look at C dot, where they do it, when they go back in and paint, it'll be recessed, so it'll actually help us when we when we plow this later, the our our plow tips will skate uh right over the top of it because it'll be recessed. So it's a win-win, I think.
So are, I mean, so it's just going to have to come in front of council at the next meeting for final approval, and then when would they be able to get started?
They give us a tentative end of December, uh, excuse me, September, so during the next couple of weeks, they can, they they're starting, you know, on project uh proceed. So hopefully.
How long will it take them to complete the project?
You know, we estimated ten days for the traffic control, but it it could be ten, it could be fifteen, it could be eight, we don't know. Just depends how efficient they are. I suspect they'll they'll move pretty quick.
So it looks like we probably get this done by the end of October?
That's correct, yes.
Before the cold weather sets in.
Right. That's what anticipated we could do that by.
I know a lot of those plastics and some of the paints are really temperature dependent. I mean, that's probably really monitored in their performance contract, right? Like?
I'm I'm sure it is, yes. You're right, it has to be a certain temp, but we'll we'll be putting this on it, we're fingers crossed it would be a nice warm fall, you know? So.
Thank you. You know, uh, we got this information from the ARPA, and now maybe you can explain the WAPA's route adder. What are they going, what?
Um, because.
What's that all about?
Because uh WAPA is primarily their power portfolio, and um I'll have to go back and look, but it's in excess of ninety percent uh hydraulic, I'm sorry, hydroelectric source source power. As as reservoirs get closer and closer to Deadpool or the level of water becomes inaccessible or inadequate to generate power, they have to supplement that power from other resources. Typically, it's a adds add a a pretty appreciable premium. So that's where the adder's coming from. Uh, I did mention um last time that uh ARPA is moving forward with uh changing where power is going to be sourced from. We were uh we're involved in uh the majority of our power is sourced from Excel or PESCO, which is a subsidiary of Excel, and starting in twenty twenty five, we're going to be moving to Guzman Electric, and um at that point, um we will see a decrease in the um the cost of power, and that's um contractually obligated going forward on a forward basis. I would say um that uh while our power costs less, you know, potentially um this this looking past twenty twenty five, um that those savings could be realized um at an end user basis, but obviously, we have to wait till we get there to to look because um our uh those future realized savings wouldn't affect the rate that we, the rate study that we just went through because those are um evaluated on the need for the capital funds. I think um I think it's a positive outlook, even though there's a increase right now.
Sure. Okay. Okay, uh, any other items for future discussions?
No, I was just curious. We've got enough purgatory.
I I, there's been a lot of discussion lately about the golf course, and I would really like to understand better how the golf course works and what or doesn't work. I think that it's, it would be helpful for council to understand that situation better. I really like it to become a more um possibly even revenue producing uh asset of the city. It is an asset, and I just don't feel like we're capitalizing on it as well as we could.
Well, the biggest issue out there, I think, has been the the restaurant portion of it. That has been the one that it goes up, it comes down, and most of the time it's coming down, so.
Yeah.
But try to get someone that will go in there to do a good job of the restaurant.
Well, we, you know, we felt similarly about Monument Lake when when that situation happened. An amazing company that has turned that place around, and I'd really like to see something like that happen at the golf course as well.
I wonder if Brett would want to take my golf.
I know.
I don't know, anything, uh, anything that you can think of?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to follow up on the golf course item, though. Councilmember, you're not the only council member who's expressed this concern to me, and I think at some point, we would want to bring a work session item to you all to really talk about kicking off what we want to do next with the golf course.
Mr. Downs, anything?
No, Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you.
Hey, wait a minute, you said no more, so. Come on, Columbo.
No, the the mayor asked. We're just teasing you.
Back to the mayor.
Potentially, potentially it was intended. But I did want to say, um, I think tonight's evaluation of the second quarter really does highlight the need for us to be intentional in our shift to a tourism-based economy, and that's all I'm saying.
You're right.
Yeah.
Okay. See you guys next week.